Okay. Good morning, everyone. This is Energy and Environment Special Meeting Revised, starting at 9:00 AM this morning. So apologize for any confusion. Today is Tuesday, November the 23rd. This is Room 1060. I'm Councilwoman Jan Perry. Mr. CLA, do we have any items that we can consent?
Yes, you do, Madam Chair. We'd like to recommend for consent item number one and two. These are time extension only amendments to existing agreements. And item number four, EIR for Echo Park Lake project.
Okay.
That leaves you with three items on agenda.
All right.
Three, five, and six.
All right. Why don't we take six, since that may be the longest one?
Sure. Actually, it's fairly, yeah.
All right. Then let's take six and get it out of the way.
Okay. We see a report relative to proposed contract with Larry Walker and Associates for expert consultant services on clean water regulatory permission issues.
Okay.
Hi. Good morning. Emilio Rodriguez, CEO's office. Report before you makes a recommendation for selection of Larry Walker Associates for expert assistance on clean water regulatory permit issues and studies. The firm is an environmental engineering and consulting firm that specializes in water quality related services. It's going to provide expert legal, technical, and scientific assistance in wastewater reclamation, stormwater regulatory issues, and permits supporting the Bureau of Sanitation's Regulatory Affairs Division. Current major activities requiring support over the next few years include renewal of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permits for the city's wastewater reclamation plants and TMDLs and environmental impact documentation.
Let me ask a question. Is the amount of this contract, which is about a million per year, consistent with past contracts in similarly situated?
Actually, it is. It hasn't been increased from current level.
Okay. Now, the report indicated there was only two respondents to the RFP for this contract. Do you have a sense of whether, was the response to the RFP lower than expected, or is this the universe you expected to respond?
I'll have the Bureau of Sanitation respond on it.
Omar Magrán, Bureau of Sanitation. The nature of the contract itself, highly specialized scientific studies, there were not too many, I would say, respondents. In fact, Larry Walker stepped in with the, with a number of subconsultants, obviously prominent ones, that could address different aspects of the Bureau of Sanitation's programs. And we did enough outreach out there to bring in as many of the, I would say, potential consultants into the, into the mix. However, Larry Walker and TRC were the only ones that responded.
Let me ask you one quick final question. Is there sufficient funding in the sewer operations and maintenance fund to cover all five years of this contract?
Yes.
It's budgeted, yes.
Okay. I don't have any additional.
I just want to make one minor modification to the recommendation to restore language regarding a consultant, a consultant liability clause. It's just slight language to restore pertinent language.
Have you reviewed this with the CLA?
Yes.
Do you approve of their revise?
It's fine. It's sufficient. We discussed it this morning.
All right. We don't have a, we don't have a quorum. Mr. Coretz is here. So how, what, do you want me to include it as part of the report and then?
Yeah, that's it. And we could include it in the board, in the, in the report, transmittal from the clerk.
All right. We'll do that.
I'll forward the pertinent language to the clerk.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. All right. That takes care of six. Then that leaves us with three and five.
Yes.
Okay. All right. One quick question on this closed session item. Is this going to take a lot of discussion?
I don't believe so. As a matter of fact, City Attorney indicated that it may not need to go in the closed session. It's simply an option, if you'd like.
Is the City Attorney here? If we can do this in open session, it might, if you, if you feel comfortable that we can do it in open session.
Yeah. Good morning. Sigmund Schuh, Deputy City Attorney. Yeah, this item need not go into closed session, only if there are specific questions on litigation and litigation strategy. Otherwise, I believe everything can probably proceed under open session.
I'll just ask this one question. You tell me whether this is a yes or a no. Are there any additional environmental impacts associated with the extension of our contract and the purchase of the farm?
Well, not, any additional environmental impacts are analyzed in the addendum. That is part of the transmittal. And the conclusion is that there are no additional significant impacts from the actions that were taken in 2000 regarding the purchase of the farm and execution of the RBM contract extension.
Okay. So then the recommendation is to approve the CEQA addendum for the acquisition of Green Acres and the execution of the contract with responsible BioSalas management.
Yes. Is there unclarified?
If I could clarify, yeah. The recommendation would be to adopt the Board of Public Works report, approve the CEQA addendum, and also approve the resolution attached to the City Attorney report, which is part of the board report.
Okay. All right. We'll do that as a communication.
Okay.
Thanks.
Right. Thank you.
All right. That leaves us with three.
For three.
That's all, right?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Department of Water and Power report relative modifications to the current solar incentive program. Madam Chair, just to provide some background, this matter was approved by the board on November 2nd, and the council then asserted jurisdiction on November 12th. The last day for the council to make a decision up or down within a 21-day window is actually tomorrow, given the council recess and holiday and so forth. And we have staff from the department, as well as CEO's office.
Okay. Great. Let's come up. Come on up.
My name is Mike Webster. I'm responsible for our renewables program at LA Water and Power. We have a very short briefing. The solar incentive program is very successful, but it is oversubscribed. The SB 1 mandate was to offer a maximum of $313 million over a 10-year period of time, which is about a $30 million a year budget, including the administrative fees. And LEDWP is committed to spending the full $313 million for solar in this city. Let me give you some breakdown. Of the $313 million, if you remove the administrative expense, there's $285 million available to actually provide to developers, owners of solar panels in the city. LEDWP has spent $45 million so far, and we currently have $110 million reserved. These are reserved, they're confirmed, and we have committed to funding the additional $110 million. So we're more than halfway expended, and we're in year three. We have about $130 million left in the program. Now, funds will be expended by 2012, four years early, at the pace that we are going at today. And with an obligation to manage approved budgets, we can't overspend our budget, is that it could take four years to get paid on the reservations that have already been made. Additionally, less solar is going to be stalled over the long term unless we take corrective actions. So the goals of the program is to continue the program through 2016. This will give the greatest chance to make the program sustainable without incentives. We want to use ratepayer money to get the maximum amount of solar installed in the city, and we want to create as many long-term jobs as possible. And we will manage the program consistent with the approved guidelines. So what happened? The tax law changed in 2009. They gave customers four times the write-off that they had previously. We've also seen a 30% to 50% decline in solar equipment costs, and we've seen social acceptance of solar. Now, we've had a lot of workshops, and we have been listening. Last year, we had six workshops on solar, and one of the main themes on the solar incentive program is work to make the program more efficient. Power Clerk, which is part of these guideline revisions, is part of that process to streamline the solar incentive program. We've also had a recent workshop specifically on the solar incentive program. We've had stakeholder meetings. We've listened to presentations at our board, our Economic Development Committee. We've listened to presentations at council. And this is what we've heard. We heard purge the database. We've done that. We found $7 million that will be and is being removed from the queue, which will make that money available to other new participants in the program. We heard manage the 50-50 split between commercial and residential installations. We have done that, and we will continue to manage that split consistent with the guidelines. We heard be more transparent. We are working to get the queue, this is the list of all the applications, on the webpage, so that everyone can see their position. And Power Clerk will help us do that and be more transparent. We heard monitor the program so that if there is too much of reduction, you can respond quickly. LEDWP has the tools in place to monitor weekly, monthly, so that we can see that if there is large unsatisfactory changes, we can respond. Our boards, Economic Development Committee, took very prompt action and actually met right after the board meeting, this was on November 15th, in order to look at those reports and analyze the progress. And they are committed to be watching this dashboard and take corrective actions if the reductions have a too large effect. We heard adjust the budget. LEDWP is committed to spend all $313 million in incentives. So some budget adjustment is necessary to make up some, for some of the early under expenditures. However, it was suggested to increase the budget to $110 million so that there would be no payment delay. Now, this will require significant discussion through the budget process. Each $100 million of increase is a .4 cent per kilowatt hour rate increase. So this will be part of a much larger discussion on a financial plan. We heard other suggestions. For example, set a price cap, so don't fund any solar that was above a certain price. And we considered that.
Have you thought about a moratorium and just dealing with the people who are already in and then slowing it down?
A moratorium? In other words, stop the program?
No, just put it on hold, take care of the people who are already in it, deal with that, and then see where you are. You know, maybe anybody, you know, you have, you say, okay, by December 31st, 2010, no new entrants.
What you're gonna, what we're considering doing, and this is consistent with what the guidelines say today.
Mm-hmm.
They say only confirm reservations consistent with the budget. So anything that is over the budget needs to be put in a holding file before you actually confirm them. So people can still apply, they can still be put on a queue.
But I don't understand that logic, because if you're already telling us you have an issue with the number of people who are in and have already applied and are seeking reservation status, then isn't it a bit, not disingenuous, I guess, to continue to encourage more people to apply if you're already raising a red flag that we can't take care of the people who have already applied? So what I'm saying is, would, is there any opportunity here to deal with who's in the, in the basket now, who's already in the hopper, who's already in the pipeline? Deal with that, and then hold on any new entrance for maybe six months, a year, I don't know, whatever's rational, and then let's see where we are.
Other utilities have done that. Glendale, Anaheim, Colton, Riverside, have all said.
It's kind of a way of controlling ourselves, but not, not disincentive.
You could stop.
Not, not basically slamming the door on people who already came into the program and basically came in in good faith and, you know, applied pursuant to the rules and wanted to participate in the program that we actually set up.
The ones, the ones that have, are in the program and are confirmed, there are no changes whatsoever to the ones that have been confirmed, none whatsoever. The changes are proposed only for new people who come in the door after the effective date of the program. So the ones that are in, there are absolutely no changes whatsoever. So there's two ways to address it.
Let me, John Dennis, Director of Power System Planning. So those that are in the queue, again, would be eligible for the full incentive amount. They would be able to get that.
And that's in the queue period. Doesn't matter where they're in the queue. As long as they're in the queue, they've submitted their application, doesn't matter whether they're at the beginning or the end, so it's not this continuum. There's no continuum there.
Yeah.
I'm talking about people who are totally outside of the queue, haven't even set their foot in the door yet.
Yeah. And with that, our board and with the direction of the guidelines of the solar incentive plan, they can make those adjustments, as you just described, so that we can essentially stop any more applications or at least give the notifications.
Okay. Put yourself on pause and deal with what you've got.
Right.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah. That's all I'm asking. Yeah, I'm asking if you can do that.
Yes.
Okay. Because it's a way to control your, your concerns about cost, and yet you're not abusing the folks who already went through the process and are in the pipeline and, and have done everything that was asked of them. Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And so the recommendation was to reduce the incentive, but still pay more than any other investor-owned utility in the state. The recommendation is not to stop the program, but to manage it and allow people to stay in a queue until we're ready to do the confirmation so that we can manage according to our budget.
And which people are you talking about keeping in the queue? The ones who are already in the pipeline or the people who haven't gotten there yet?
No, these would be new people. In other words, we, right now, we're proposing a new applicant could come in and put their application in. We would not confirm it. We would just let them sit in line until we're ready then to confirm it according to our budget. And we would let them know that we may get to this in the 12, 13 fiscal year.
Well, I don't, I don't know if that's such a great idea, because that sort of induces people to come into a process not knowing when it will be activated, and you, you then raise expectations too, you know, that you may or may not be able to meet and within a timeframe that you can't yet define. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the last point I wanted to make is that our goal is to get more solar. 20 megawatts more solar, more participation, 1,000 additional ratepayers will be able to take advantage of the solar program, and more jobs were the long-term, 200 labor years of additional jobs because there's more solar being installed. And by sustaining it through 2016, we increase the chance that this will be a sustainable program without incentives.
What, what's Edison doing in some of the other regional utilities with respect to their solar incentive programs? And are they still offering incentive payments? And are they as competitive as the Department of Water and Powers?
Edison still offers incentive payments. They are much lower than Department of Water and Powers. Of course, their rates are much, much higher than Department of Water and Powers.
And are you, have you looked at any administrative efficiencies that you could obtain in this program in order to protect the maximization of incentive rates?
Well, yes. That's part of improving the processes with Power Clerk. It's part of streamlining the program.
So what, what administrative, okay, so tell me what administrative efficiencies you've been able to determine. Just give me an overview.
The Power Clerk software, what that will do is it will help us post where everybody is in the queue. They can track more effectively where they are in the process, and it'll be a communication tool for all of our participants so they can follow exactly where they are in the process. And so that will help having a organized process, reduce staff time for each of the incentive applications that come in, and provide better communication and transparency for all participants.
Give me a, give me the budget figure, the annual budget figure for the SIP. And given the number of applications that you have now in the pipeline, when you project these funds will run out?
The annual budget is approximately $30 million a year. That was what was proposed. There was a reduction last year when we went through some of the ECAF discussions, and they reduced the budget to what we were paying in the past. But we're committed to make that budget to 30 million annual, and will be about two and a half years to go through the entire queue.
Now, with the modifications you've made, is there a chance that you can remain operational through 2016?
We believe that we will be able to stay operational with incentives through 2016, or very close to that.
Um, with the budget as it is now, without rate increases?
The budget as it is now, with the 30 million, I'm not sure, John, if you want to tackle that, but that was the original proposal when we started the program.
This particular item with regards to the budget allocations and what's being proposed is the Complete Integrated Resource Plan. We're coming forward with that, the total IRP.
Maybe, let me ask it another way. Would you increase the annual budget of the SIP without a rate increase?
Right now, we, we're proposing this budgetary adjustment, going from the 17 to the 30 without having a budgetary increase.
Without a rate increase?
Without a rate increase.
Okay. What, where are you going to get the money from then?
Well, right now, again, we're just, at this point, for the short term, for this particular fiscal year that we're in, again, we're looking through to see where those funds would be available to, in order to maximize this particular program here. So, but beyond that, again, those would be come through the rate adjustments that would be impacted for future years.
And then when would you anticipate that would occur?
Well, those, those would come through as far as a recommendation with the 2011, '12 fiscal year budget.
Just around the corner.
That's right. And we expect to have those to counsel as far as the budgetary process in the March-April timeframe.
Okay. Mr. Coretz, why don't we have you speak next? And then we have some cards. And I can say now that I have a number of issues that I want the CLA to give me some information back and then verify, and we're probably going to have to have one more committee meeting on this before we move ahead to counsel.
Actually, Madam Chair, the day that, the council has to make a decision no later than tomorrow, and this matter is.
Tomorrow?
Yeah. Within a 21-day.
Well, then maybe you can answer the questions for tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Mr. Coretz.
Yes. Now, I asked for a 245 after being approached by the industry, environmentalists, and residents, and all of whom were concerned that we would be dramatically ramping this program down to a degree that we would actually be gutting the program and virtually eliminating it in the future. There's, there's a question of whether we could ramp this program down, but not so dramatically that we actually completely wipe out the disincentive. And I should point out, it's, it's easier for our competitors in this arena because their rates are higher. So the savings with solar wind up being dramatically greater for them than they are for us. It's more difficult because our energy rates are lower. It's just one of the unfortunate byproducts of being, being more reasonably priced in this particular case. We talked to various folks and came up with a proposal, and I don't have the exact numbers, but let's say we're talking about going from being able to make your money back in seven or eight years to around 15, I think, if I recall the DWP proposal. And we were talking about something more in the 12 to 13 range. So not much of a, not much less of a ramping down, but folks in the industry have told us that's sort of where they view the, the breakpoint, where, where the incentives become no longer incentive enough that it actually brings in customers. And we know at one point, this, this program wasn't really bringing in a lot of people. In the initial time, it was substantially unsubscribed. And my understanding is, is that now we're actually at about a break-even. We're right now on, on pace for, for where we needed to be. It's just a question of where we go in the future. So I know we, we worked with staff, tried to come up with a program, thought we had something reasonable that everyone could agree on, and then essentially, after all the hearings and everything else, essentially it's the same proposal that we started with. Why could we not come up with something that was, was just a little bit more of an incentive than proposed and actually keep the industry alive?
These discussions occurred after our board had already approved the package. And so without vetting with our board, we can't enter, staff cannot enter those types of negotiations without bringing it back to our Board of Water and Power commissioners.
But by, by us doing what we're doing, it gives us the opportunity to place that back with them and have them scrutinize a proposal that might be one that, that does what we're hoping to do in terms of slowing down the program a bit, but also allows the industry to continue without being such a disincentive that it brings installations to a grinding halt. So if, if that's our goal, would it not make sense to do this 245 and bring it back to the DWP board for further discussion?
Would it be helpful to you just to get a brief understanding of how that was adjusted?
Sure.
Would that be helpful?
Yeah.
Do you have that information, just how that was adjusted?
Yeah. The adjustment.
And maybe also input from installers and whether we, we considered the impact on, on them and whether we would wipe out the industry.
The incentive level was set with a couple of metrics in mind, is that prior to 2009, now, again, keep in mind, I'm going to use some break evens, but it's only for comparative purposes, or not to compare with some of the things that you've heard. So it's just to compare the different scenarios. So prior to 2009, we calculated the break-even to be roughly 16 years. And that was not getting the participation levels that we thought, that we had planned for. Post 2009, the break-even using the same calculation was approximately 13 years, and that was way too fast. And so what we decided to do as a reasonable solution is to find a break-even in between. So we're right around the 14, 15 break-even year as the incentive. We were also, the other metric was to use what the state is already paying, which is 40 cents, much lower than ours. And so we decided to look at that and then still provide the additional incentive, recognizing that DWP rates are some of the best in California.
Right. Which obviously is a problem in terms of providing enough incentive.
And, and so you're absolutely right, what you described earlier. We've got a combination that we have to continue to balance. One is, the payback period is dependent on two things. One is the funds available and how much we're going to incentivize, but also the, our rate structure that's going to make the difference between this 13 or 16 years and the likes of that. So we're incentivizing as much as we can here, and with the dollars available, we've stepped that up and proposed to do that so that we've gone from 17 million to 30 million to try to match some of this pace. So we're doing what we can on this side. Now, some of the representatives that come, have spoken to us and to your staff has, have insinuated that in order to get that payback to a quicker time, they proposed that that would be able to get down to the six-year period if we would raise our rates by 60%. So your staff had suggested to the developers that that was not a reasonable approach for us to do that, and we concurred. But he was able to repeat himself at least twice in your chambers there with regards to that particular discussion. So we're working on this side here. What we can do, which is to provide that, and so by doubling those rates and making a small adjustment, as we've described, of tapping the brakes, we're doing what we can, I believe, at this point, to try to keep that balanced and to try to keep, as Mike has described, a longer-term and sustainable program for the folks.
Now, I, I'm not an expert in this arena, but our discussions with, with people in the industry and with environmentalists would imply that this is more than a tapping of the brakes, that what we, we had discussed as a compromise might be a tapping of the brakes. What this would be is bringing it to a grinding, shocking halt. So how do we know where, where the reality is between what the department's proposing and what the industry is, is saying the impacts will be?
Yeah. First, I want to mention that we recognize that some have said that, some developers, but we're in relation with many, many, many developers, and there are many developers who do not say that this is slamming the brakes on. So we've got to take that. There's a whole bell-shaped range of opinions as far as what the impact is on, on the industry. And the important thing for us is to make sure we're monitoring that dashboard so that we can take corrective actions as quickly as possible, so that if the program comes to a screeching halt, right, we want to take corrective actions before that happens. And that's why our Economic Development Committee was so interested in making sure that they follow this.
There's an example there on the, you want to point that out there on the curve?
So if you point your attention to the curve up on this chart, if we're on the blue line, we are exactly where we need to be in the program so that the $285 million that's available as payout actually goes through 2016 at the end of the program. So if we're below the curve, we're not expending as much. As soon as we hit the curve, we're in perfect shape for a sustainable program. The red line you can see is much higher, and this is why. The red line you can see is much higher, and this is why, if it continues at this rate, we'll hit $285 million about four years early.
So, our challenge was, as we described last week, was either just let the program and, and applications come into the queue without any impact, secondly, is to just tap the brakes and watch the dashboard closely, or third, is just stop altogether. And that was maybe a suggestion that was made today, as well as stop taking any more applications.
Right, which I think is what people are nervous about, that this winds up, in essence, being a moratorium that shuts down the industry, and that it's very difficult for it to, to ramp up when it's been shut down.
So, with this, the suggestion is, we've got such a steep incline right there, and we want to make sure that folks understand, as far as even getting their incentive checks and the likes, and having those in some kind of a timely fashion, it's going to be a while, based on the budgets, but then, to just to see that curve come down closer, and that's what the DWP's Economic Development Committee, the subcommittee of our board, is watching closely, that dashboard, and to see how this is performing, and then come back with suggestions if they need to adjust it up or down, and make those closer for the sustainable, long-term program.
Now, what's, one of the things that's been suggested to me, and one of the, plus part of the conversation when, when this was discussed in council, is to leave the rate at, at the higher rate that you recommended, but drop it for those who, who provide service in LA County. So, we provide a local preference. By doing that, we, we get close to what you're trying to do, but we, we tap on the brakes a little more gradually, and rather than have this jolting increase and then trying to respond to it, that we, we take a step that's a little more gradual, and then, you're, you're equally able to respond if you see it's not doing the job. But in all likelihood, I suspected, it would slow things down enough that you'd be back in sync.
That has been looked at, and right now, there is an incentive component for the materials that are manufactured. The concern is still, is that in the fairness of the program, so you see one person across the street who puts in a panel that was installed by a local installer, and another one across the street by a local, and they may be seeing widely different pricing structures as to the incentives and such. So, there's a fairness component that we're just concerned about also.
Well, of course, when you do local preference, you have that issue by nature, but obviously, it builds the economy up. The other point I'd make is that...
Mr. Coretts, let me just interrupt you for a second, because we're going to run out of time, and we do have six cards. If we give everybody two minutes each, that's six times twelve minutes, and the President does want us down there at ten o'clock, so would you like to cut the time that the people speak, so you, what would you like to do?
How about ninety seconds for each of them?
Okay, can you set the clock at ninety seconds? All right, do you want to start that now? What do you want to?
Sir.
Okay, all right, let's get, bring another chair up here, we can get four people up here at a time, so we can do this and still get out of here at ten o'clock, because I'm going to just do, I'm going to suggest that we take Mr. Coretts's requests, and I'm going to put some things on the record and have the CLA respond to us tomorrow in council. So, Ken, is it Ken Button?
Yes.
Ken Button, Jim Stewart, Peter Parish, and Mark Davidson. Okay, ninety seconds each. All right, he's going to, our CLA is going to flag you, we can't program it for ninety seconds. Okay, Ken Button.
That's me.
You ready?
Yeah. Thank you for your time and attention to this important issue. My name is Ken Button, I'm president of Berango Solar, we're the largest residential installer in the city. We've joined a broad coalition of environmental community and business groups to urge you to veto these cuts, and I'd like to emphasize two things this morning. One is that this isn't just about these, these, this SIP program and these solar rebates, it's about LA's ability to attract clean tech business and investment going forward, and the jobs that go along with that. These are unexpected drastic cuts, they will slam on the brakes, particularly for residential, and they're going to hurt businesses like mine that have invested in growing our business here in LA, and it sends exactly the wrong message to the clean tech world, that, that LA is not a stable place for this kind of business going forward, and my fear is that's really going to hurt all of these efforts going forward, and our, our local economy. Second, another reason I'd urge you to veto these changes now is to consider them as part of the IRP, and ensure, as part of that process, that homeowners are not excluded from solar programs in the city. The proposed rebate cuts on the table today really disproportionately affect residential customers. The cuts are twice as big as they are for non-residential, and there's really no explanation for why that is, when the program growth is only thirty percent residential, that's it.
No, thank you. All right, Jim Stewart?
Jim Stewart, representing the Global Warming Committee of the Angeles Chapter of the Sierra Club, and we are really concerned about, it's looking like mismanagement of DWP budget. They knew they had this forty-nine million dollars over, you know, underspent the first three years, and yet, they haven't budgeted it. For some unknown reason, they've done this thirty million dollars a year, knowing they had forty-nine million extra to spend, and so, clearly, this needs to be sent back for some rebudgeting by DWP. I mean, this is really irresponsible for them to, what, what did they spend that forty-nine million dollars on? But, but, but you need it now, now when we've got the demand, now when people are ready to put in solar, now we've got the, the infrastructure, the solar installers are ready to go, the people are ready to go, and DWP wants to put on the brakes. And we want to support all of you here in your desire to keep the good jobs, the good green jobs that we need in this city, and of course, to symbolize our city on the forefront of stopping global warming. Thank you.
Peter Parish.
Yes.
Mark Davidson, and then James Brennan and Ethan Sprague, come on up.
Yes, Peter Parish, 820 Cynthia Avenue, Los Angeles, so I'm a resident of the city and also have a small solar integration company, California Solar Engineering. I urge the board not only to veto, or this committee to not only veto the, the incentive issues, but also to reject some of the non-budgetary issues, for example, the insistence by the part of the Department of Water and Power to exclude C-46 solar contractors from installing systems over twenty kilowatts. There's just no rhyme or reason, no, no argument, cogent argument that, that I've heard that supports this. Solar contractors have been installing the bulk of systems in the city and in the state, and this is true whether it's residential or commercial, so I, I really see this more as a political issue than a, a well-reasoned thought. The other point I'd like to make is that I've been in the program, working with the city, with DWP since 2002, and I echo my, my colleague's comment, that we have a rebate structure that was well-understood, well-thought-out, and the only problem is, is that it's heated up a little bit, and that the city has, and the department hasn't had an opportunity to fund it properly, so I would like to see the funding there, rather than reduce the rates. Thank you.
Okay, Mark Davidson, then James Brennan.
Good morning, I'm Mark Davidson with NRG Systems. We install residential, commercial, and we work with a lot of nonprofits here in the city, and as, you know, my colleagues all said, that the program is desperately needing funding, and the problem with this is obviously a funding issue. The program is mandated to spend three hundred and thirteen million, the first three years of the program, they budgeted only seventeen million because of applications, that would have left fifty million in the bucket. That fifty million was diverted to other programs. Now, when the program is taking off and people are using it, they are shorthanded in funds. The reality is, they're obligated to spend the three hundred and thirteen million dollars, and it was their failure of anticipation of the market to set the budget at seventeen million, when the program desired more. One thing that was not mentioned by DWP is that the reason there's such a high demand right now is because the expiration of the federal grant program. This is a program that is specifically designed to fund solar in places where tax credits can be used. Tax credits are only good for taxpayers, you know, people who don't have a tax income right now can't take advantage of a tax credit, so that boy makes no difference to them if they don't have the appetite for it. So, it's very important to understand that the demand right now, and as you look at the charts that is provided, is spiking at the end of this year because the program is expiring. There's a lot of big contracts, big municipal contracts, commercial contracts that are taking advantage of that, which will end. So, I would see the, the numbers before the program, you can anticipate the same numbers after. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, James Brennan, and then, the last speaker is Ethan Sprague.
Hi, good morning, my name is James Brennan, I'm a homeowner in Mar Vista. In 2009, I installed solar panels through the solar incentive program, along with thirty-one other neighbors, and what became the largest group solar installation in DWP. I'm one of the organizers of Open Neighborhoods. As a group, we are continuing the solar program this year on a much larger scale. We've got many homeowners and many businesses participating. What I want to emphasize is that these businesses and these homeowners are really investment partners here with the city and this program, and cutting the rebate makes solar less affordable to them. The only reason we can get reduced prices through a group program under five dollars a watt is because of the economy of scale, because of the volume of installations we can drive. By reducing the rebate, we make solar less affordable, fewer homes will be able to participate, and prices will go up. The rebate program has been one of the most successful components of the LADWP solar program today, and in fact, it's the most cost-effective. If you take a look at the IRP appendix and the model analysis, it shows, for example, that there's a budget of six hundred and sixty million dollars to invest one hundred and twenty megawatts of capacity in the city. By comparison to that six hundred and sixty million, only two hundred and eighty million dollars is allocated to customer net metering, and yet, that's expected to deliver two hundred and twenty-five megawatts compared to the one hundred and twenty megawatts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sprague?
Hi, my name is Ethan Sprague, I work with Sunrun, we provide lease systems to residential homeowners in LADWP. We're urging you to not cut the rebates, the rebates aren't the problem. Let me tell you how it works for us. We buy a system from local installers, and they maintain it. We lease that system to a homeowner. We average about a hundred homeowners a month, we invest about 1.5 million in solar equipment and installation. The average upfront cost for those homeowners, these are moderate-income homeowners, are paying a thousand dollars down, twenty-five percent of them pay zero down. If you reduce the rebate, that amount goes from one thousand to five thousand dollars. The systems that are installed by local, local people will decline, those jobs will go away. We estimate there's one, one job for every six systems. So, we don't think the rebates are the problem. The problem has been the budget. They flatlined the budget, thirty million across ten years, the program got off slow, they, they instituted the grant program, and so, there was a large drain recently, but we think the, the volumes will, will level down. If you could take the forty-nine million that wasn't spent in the first three years and have it now, there would be no rebate problem. And the moderate-income homeowners of LA could, could lease these systems, and that would employ their local colleagues. I think it's, it's, it's right to, to look at this in the context of the IRP, where you're looking at utility and other investments in the community, and this is a very cost-effective way. The tax, last, last thing, that the tax changes that have happened don't make it more cost-effective for lease systems, that only applies to wealthy people that have a tax liability.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you to all the speakers. I want to put a couple of thoughts on the record, then, Mr. Coretts, you do the same, and then, we'll direct the CLA to get the answers for us for tomorrow's council meeting. Again, I wanted to reiterate my question, and see if we can get a little bit of analysis on this by tomorrow, about taking care of the people who are already in the program, and what the options are in terms of a moratorium to have some control over what occurs in the future, and possibly, you know, just putting, putting a hold on anybody who's not in the program now, versus what I think the department described, which is people who are in the hopper now, and waiting to see when they can lift the gate again. And I appreciate the explanation on what has caused the upswing in the number of applications to the SIP, that, that makes a lot of sense from the speaker. I also want to have the CLA give me an answer definitively about a potential increase in the annual budget, and whether that affects annual rates, or, or, I want to add in the ECAF, I need to have an answer to that, and, let's see, the modifications of lowering base incentive rates, and whether or not that will result in declining solar participation throughout the city. So, basically, what I'm saying is, you know, that we have people in the program now, they've come in in good faith, they've abided by the, the framework, the rules and regulations, and we should treat them well for responding to our program. The way we can control this is kind of like the pension system for people who haven't been hired yet, same, this is a similar analogy, for people who haven't stepped across the threshold into the program, whether we can just put a hold on it and see where we stand with the ones that we're taking care of now, the ones who are already in the pipeline. Now, the effective date of these modifications is January the first, 2011, and the board asked staff to come back in ninety days on the overall impact of the changes. I don't know whether the board's inclined to change or modify, again, if the impact has been negative, so, you know, we're sort of in a groping...
Yeah.
...in the dark here, so, if you can get me those answers by tomorrow's council meeting, and then, this is Rafael Prieto here, he is the chief legislative analyst, and he's at rafael dot prieto, P-R-I-E-T-O, at la-city dot org, and anybody, you know, some of the speakers today may want to email him some additional input, given what I say and what Mr. Coretts has to say in terms of him preparing for tomorrow. I'm sorry to put you out there, but...
It's okay.
...it might be more efficient. Mr. Coretts?
Yeah, I, I would just note, the department seems to be implying that they can turn on a dime if, if it turns out this is too dramatic a change. It took quite a while for them to respond to the fact that they were dramatically undersubscribed, then it took eight months to respond when they found they were dramatically oversubscribed. So, I would rather have them take a step that's just a hair less dramatic, have less to, to respond to when, when we see the drop-off. I think, especially when, when the federal funding runs out, I think we will see a pretty dramatic drop-off, and when you include what, what we're talking about doing with dramatic cut in, in our own subsidy, I think this industry will fall off a cliff if we do what we're talking about. So, I hope we'll look at that. One of the things I might suggest in terms of, of budgeting, since we seem to be having these dramatic swings, is rather than budgeting annually, perhaps we budget quarterly, and have a quarter, each quarter, a quarter of that amount, and review it at the end of that quarter. So, I think our budgetary swings will be less dramatic, and we'll be able to, to keep more of a handle on it. I, I, I also echo some of Ms. Perry's suggestions that we look at as well, and hopefully, although not, not ideal, we'll be able to come back with all that information twenty-four hours later. I wish we had a little more time for a greater analysis, but unfortunately, the timing is what it is.
All right.
Given that, we'd like to forward this matter to council without recommendation tomorrow, depending whatever information we come up with.
Correct.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of our agenda, this is the time period for people wishing to comment on items that are not on the agenda during the public comment period, to come forward at this time. All right, seeing that no one is coming forward, the meeting is adjourned.
Madam Chair?
Uh-huh.
Could I add one other instruction that we also look at?
Okay, let's see, do I have to put the meeting back in session?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So, how do I do that?
It's, we didn't turn it off, so...
Okay, so, we're, we're back in session for, forget the adjournment, we're back in session.
One other thing I think we should look at is local preference, if we could include that in your analysis, that would be great. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Coretts, may that request, and again, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.